Looks like it's six o'clock. I think everybody is signed in from the planning commission. So cameras on for all the commissioners.
There we go. All right. Well, welcome to the September ninth, 2020 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Will staff please take the roll? We'll note that, um, let's see. Are we all here?
Dave, would you go ahead and call the rollout?
Yes, um, Courtwright.
Here.
Graff. McKenzie.
Here.
Sarah. Mound and Frank are all present.
Excellent. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Um, I believe the minutes will be presented at a later date. Is there any correspondence?
Uh, no correspondence, Mr. Chair, other than that related to items on the agenda.
And I checked the email. We didn't have any last minute in, uh, submittals, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, for our new business, um, we have public hearings for two items tonight. First hearing, which we will open now, is for, um, item S D P two zero two zero 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 one, uh, Tom Jackson Dock. Uh, do the staff have a presentation for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do. If Matt would assist me with sharing my screen, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
I have expired that now. Sorry, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Tonight, we're having an open record decision hearing for the matter of shoreline substantial development permit twenty twenty oh one. The Jackson Dock project. With Tom and Wendy Jackson also in. The proposed use is residential accessory use. The zoning is R two A, location four sixteen Second Street. And prior meetings are Development Review Group and Neighborhood Meeting. Just got an internet warning. Is everybody hear me okay and see the slides okay?
Yes.
Thank you. The applicants are proposing a new floating dock secured with four steel pilings connected to the shore via a ramp with concrete footing. The dimensions of the dock are eight feet wide and thirty feet long. And the graded gangway ramp is three feet wide and fifty-three feet long. Notice of application was posted on May twentieth and the notice of the hearing was posted on August nineteenth of this year. CIPA determination was issued on July fifteenth, twenty twenty with a mitigated determination of non-significance. No public comments were received. We received one agency comment referring to flood development requirements, which are actually, and our department deferred to the building permit process uh, rather than the shoreline land use process. So those will be addressed at a later time. Critical areas in the project. Uh, there are critical areas in the vicinity, including marine fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And a critical, uh, of my, critical area evaluation report was submitted that demonstrated how they avoided and minimized impacts as much as feasible and included a mitigation plan, which was prepared for the federal permit process and included in this proposal. And here's just the map of the priority habitat and species under fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. Zoning is again R two A residential low density. It is, um, mainly established for residential development. And single-family residences and accessory uses are permitted in the R two A zone. Under the Shoreline Management Act, because this proposal lies within two hundred feet of the shoreline, it is subject to conformance with the city's shoreline master program. The proposal is located mostly in the aquatic shoreline environmental designation with a small portion upland uh, improvements occurring in the shoreline residential shoreline environmental designation. According to table five point one in the shoreline master program, docks, piers and floats for private use are permitted in the shoreline residential shoreline environmental designation along the Cap Santi area of Anacortes, as well as in the aquatic shoreline environmental designations. You can see here the location in the city and what the two parcels look like along with the shoreline. And the site plan shows along the, the rocky outcrop here where the concrete apartment ramp and dock will be located. And this is just a cross-section diagram of what it'll look like. And here's just an aerial view. Again, another perspective of what the property in the shoreline area looks like for the project site.
Before we move to the next slide, Tess, could you, uh, just use your cursor or something to outline the approximate area of the project?
Uh, there's diagrams that will show it. But it will be, the approximate location will be here. And you'll see that better in the next few slides.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Here are a few existing condition photos so that you can see the shoreline from a different point of view. This is from the house looking towards the shore. And this is from the neighbor's yard looking from the shore or looking from the water towards the shore. Or towards the land. And just pictures of the tidelands. It's, again, it's just a rocky outcrop, um, in the vicinity. And here's a sketch up of what it'll look like. As well as, I believe this is what you're looking forward. It's really very small, but you can see, um, the parcel, the rocky outcrop, and this is going to be the location of the dock.
Thank you. That answered my question quite nicely.
The, I'm gonna go back to new slides. For part of the avoidance and habitat or mitigation, the ramp is going to be open grading. And the float itself is going to be concrete, um, tiles that are, uh, light penetrating as well. So it meets, um, modern standards for, uh, environmental needs. And just look at this really briefly to get an idea of what the project will look like. And that's my brief presentation on the project. I'm happy to answer questions, go back and look at and discuss items um, in the diagrams and the site plan. And the applicant is standing by to answer questions as well.
Uh, one question, just to confirm that all of the other permissions have either been granted or are conditional?
Those are.
From other agencies?
Correct. The other agency permits are, uh, there's a condition in the um, document that requires all other permits to be submitted to the city as a condition of approval.
Okay, before we start discussion, um, shall we ask if there are any public comments at this time?
Absolutely. Matt, do we have any members of the public other than the applicants that are called in or logged in for?
Nobody has indicated with a raised hand that they would like to discuss.
Thank you.
Uh, no public comments being forthcoming. Shall we proceed to discussion? Uh, perhaps we could just do a quick go around, make sure everybody has a chance to either, uh, pass on it or ask any questions or make any comments. Can we start with Mr. Courtwright?
I just had one test. And it's just a clarification. Um, looking at the property, it looks like it'll be, it's narrow to get heavy equipment there. So is it a safe assumption that the construction will be, this will be barge traffic and they'll bring in a crane and do the pilings and all that other stuff so that there will be minimal work done on the actual shoreline itself?
Yes, that's a great question. I apologize. I forgot to mention that. Yes, all work will be done from the water side via barge.
Okay, that makes sense, given that environment.
Uh, any other concerns, questions? We'll move on to Mr. Graff.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the only question I would have, and it would be more out of interest than anything, if there are any restrictions or limitations on, on, on whether a boat would be permanently docked there, whether this is for transient use. Um, any concerns about the size or length of the, of the boat that would be there or anything like that, either from the state or the city?
I don't believe the city has regulations that specify, Don, could, could correct me if I'm wrong, for the actual boat use and timeframe of this dock.
Thank you, Tess. So it could not be used for commercial purposes. It could only be used for residential purposes. But there are no limitations on length of stay for, for that, uh, boat, uh, nor on size.
Thank you.
Thank you. That, that's the only question I have.
Okay, uh, Mr. Juretsky.
It appeared that the, uh, is the water depth about ten feet where the dock will be? Is that the way, is that the way I read that, uh, that chart?
That is a good question.
Would you like, Tess, would you like me to answer that?
Please, that would be great. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, hi, this is Tom. I don't know if y'all can see my video, but I got really clear reception on each of you, so uh, I want to say hello to the chair and the commissioners and introduce myself on Tom Jackson. Um, the depth there, of course, varies with tide. The shallowest part under the float will be at about minus five and a half. Um, and that's from zero reference. So we are putting in, uh, stops on the pilings to keep the, uh, boat from hitting the bottom at its lowest, lowest water. Um, but we won't be keeping a, a deep draft vessel there. This is really for recreational uses and the depth is about, uh, going to be on the average of about, uh, ten feet deep.
That's ten feet at high tide, low tide, or that's average?
Well, that's, that's average. At high tide, it'll be about, at high tide, it'll be about, uh, uh, fifteen feet and at zero tide, it'll be about five feet.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Mount?
Yeah, my only question would be, uh, if a boat is docked there, are the same constraints imposed on the boat in terms of noise and bothering neighbors as there are as a residential situation?
It would fall under all of the same noise or, and requirements, except for the construction of, um, and that has its own, um, requirements under building code and in the, uh, conditions of the shoreline permit.
Okay. Anything else?
We're confident this can be done without damage, any damage to the wildlife in the area?
There is a substantial, um, evaluation of, of the microinvertebrates in the, the areas along the shoreline here. And the, it is, um, let me see, find the report here. It was determined not likely to affect. However, the report does include mitigation measures that will offset any unintentional impacts.
And what would the mechanism be to make sure that those mitigation measures are followed through?
Those are...
Tess, do, I've, I've been looking at that. Do you want me to comment on that and you can follow up?
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure. It's Tom again. Um, so part of the, uh, federal permitting and the state permitting is with, uh, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, also the state, uh, Department of Ecology and Fish and Wildlife, Federal Fish and Wildlife. So their mitigation, their risk as, uh, as it stands up today, saying they would like us to plant about a hundred square feet, ten by ten, of eel grass. And they will be monitoring that eel grass over a five-year period compared to a control area in order to establish, um, A, that that implemented mitigation is doing, uh, doing well, and if not, we'll have to plant some more.
Um, when we had a hearing with the Port, Van Acortus to update one of their docks, I believe, a couple of years ago, there was a limited time window during the year where they could do work to minimize damage. Is that going to be the case here?
Yes, that is the case. Um, there's a season, they call it a season for pile driving. And, uh, we're in it right now. Uh, it will, uh, shut down in Skagit County in, uh, early February is my understanding. And in the rest of the counties, including Skagit, work can continue, uh, into, further into the winter, uh, but it's by special permit. So our objective is to get everything, uh, installed, the pile drive, the piles driven and the dock, uh, you know, pinned in before this season ends. If not, we're gonna have to wait until next season.
If you're unable to do that, will, will you follow up with the city so the city's aware of where things stand?
Yeah, yeah, we have good communication with the city.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Ruther, have you anything?
No.
Okay. Um, I have one question. Perhaps somebody can educate me about this a little bit. The reason I asked it for the overhead look to see where the dock is laid out. Um, I'm unfamiliar with what you do, um, in the waterway. For example, this probably out of not completely the scale picture here shows the dock quite close to a boundary. And how do we know that a boat tied up to that dock won't be encroaching on the neighboring waterway?
Well, the boat is in the water, and this is something I asked too, and the boat is in the water um, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and exactly where it is, I was advised, wasn't limited. So it's tied up at this dock or another dock, but the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who's responsible for navigation of the waterways, is evaluating that.
So really, they were looking at the placement of the facility itself, not the, not the boats that intend to use it?
Well, I bet they were looking at, you know, all aspects of it. Uh, I, I don't know particularly. I'd be surprised if they weren't, but I haven't asked them.
The navigate, I can never say that word. Army Corps of Engineers is in charge of navigatable waters. And that's part of their permit processes to make sure that there's no obstructions to shipping lanes, shipping traffic and the navigatable waters.
So the city's, um, basically verified that this is a proper use in this particular location?
Correct. Through the shoreline master program, allowing residential, private residential docks along Cap Santi. Um, through that comprehensive process of doing the shoreline master program, that's where we've identified they're appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much. I have no further questions. Are there, is there any further discussion?
Hey, Ward, this is Jeff Graff. Hey, since we have Tom Jackson there, Tom, um, the, um, the gray area that's just outside of your property line, is that a dredged, a deep, deep water access there?
No, it's not dredged. Um, that's part of Gwamis Channel. Jeff, you can almost see the shading of that Cap Santi basalt that goes out into the water there and it shelves and drops down to about forty feet out there. But that dark blue area to the left, upper left, is, is the, it's about forty-five feet or so, fifty feet, and that's where the port is hoping to get deep enough in the future, uh, for some bigger ships. But no, none of this is dredged. Jeff, I find this a really interesting plot here that these guys made for us. You can see what's going on under this. This is a very commercial basin, you know, the those are, uh, the freighters are going in and out of here from the ramp, you know, six times a day, in and out. And, uh, there's a dock over on the left-hand side and there's a lot going on. It's pretty shallow water in here. You never see a recreational boat in here unless they're just a small fishing or crabbing boat.
Right, right. No, I just, I was just wondering if that gray spot there was perhaps an area that got dredged out. And, you know, I was gonna use that as an example perhaps for Ward to suggest that, you know, if you, if a boat on the water didn't necessarily have to be, you know, it was almost like an airplane in the air, right? It doesn't, it's in the air. It does, it's not in the air owned by somebody overhead of their home, right? Where you could have, you could have played that deep water access area with your pier and taken advantage of that, but you know, you've placed your dock probably in the deepest part of the water that you can and still maintain any boat on that dock in your property area. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, any further questions? This time, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is Don.
Yes, Mr. Measor.
Uh, perhaps, uh, just, uh, since there has been no public comment, uh, close the hearing and then go for a motion.
Huh, thank you, sir. I got it out of order. So no further questions or comments and no further public comments. We will close this hearing and proceed with this decision. Anyone have the wording in front of them and want to make a motion? At lacking that, the chair will move to approve the shoreline substantial development permit number two zero two zero 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 one, subject to the staff suggested conditions of approval. Do I have?
I'll second.
Okay, um, since we don't have a, an easy way to do roll calls, shall I just call out each person's name and get a yea or nay on this? Um, we'll go in the same order. Mr. Courtwright?
Yay.
Mr. Graff?
Yay.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yay.
Uh, Mr. Mount?
Yay.
Ms. Ruther?
Yay.
And the chair votes yay as well. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, commissioners.
And I have that recorded as well. This is Dave Eichels.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to our next public hearing. SPL two zero two zero 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 three Cherry Court Short Plat and Conditional Use Permit. May we have the staff report?
Hello, uh, planning commissioners and members of the audience. My name is Libby Grage and I am the planning manager in the, uh, city of Anacortes Planning Department. And I will try to share my screen. Can everyone see that? Great, thank you. Uh, so the, the second item before you this evening on the planning commission's agenda is a pre-decision open record uh, public hearing and decision meeting on SPL twenty twenty dash zero zero three, zero 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 three. Um, and the project name is the Cherry Court Short Plat and Conditional Use Permit Application. The applicant for this proposal is Landed Gentry Development and, uh, Corner Nine Properties. The land owner is LG Anacortes. The project proposal is a six-watt subdivision of land. Uh, the different, the permit types that are required for this proposal include preliminary short subdivision approval and a conditional use permit per AMC seventeen seventy, which is our critical areas regulations. Um, the, the zoning of the subject property is R one. And the site is located south of Orchard's Avenue and the, and the Cherry Lane intersection in the south end of town. Uh, the, the type of review for the two permit types, the applicant has opted to go with a consolidated application processing, so... So even though a short plat is typically a type-two decision, they've opted to have that processed along with the conditional use permit, which is a type-three Planning Commission decision. So that makes the Planning Commission the decision maker for both of those application types. A little bit of project history and all of these dates that these things occurred are in the staff report that you have in your packet for this meeting. There was a pre-application meeting and also a pre-application neighborhood meeting was held virtually back in June, I believe it was. Complete application for the short plat and conditional use permit application were submitted. And a notice of application with a 20-day comment period was published, consistent with city code requirements. The application was routed to all city departments and applicable agencies for comments. A CIPA determination of nonsignificance was issued and there have been no appeals of that threshold determination. A notice of public hearing was also published, consistent with city requirements, and 15 days before this public hearing. And then tonight, we're here at the stage, the public hearing for the project. So the project location, this is a, you can see a zoning map of the city or of the eastern portion of the city. This black star is generally where the site is located, down in the south end of town, as I mentioned, in the R1 zoning district. And then here's an aerial photo of the site. 41st Street is just to the north. Cherry Lane comes down to the project site and then Orchard's Avenue is access to the property. And then the blue line here is Ace of Hearts Creek. So the project site existing conditions. The site is approximately 3.12 acres. It's currently undeveloped and vegetated with primarily pasture grass. Site slopes gently downward from the southwest corner to the northeast corner. As I mentioned, Ace of Hearts Creek runs to the east of the project site. There is a long panhandle that is attached to the primary portion of the project site. And that Ace of Hearts Creek bisects that panhandle. There's just a 16-foot-long portion of the creek on the subject property and it's within, located within a culvert. Surrounding uses include single-family residences, primarily surrounded by the R1 zone. A little bit farther to the south, there is the Anacortes Community Forest Lands Hart Lake area. So the first component of the application is the preliminary short plot. So this is the preliminary short plot drawing that was submitted with the application. As I mentioned, there are six single-family residential lots that are proposed. So it's one, two, three, four, five, six. And then one stormwater detention tract up in the northeast corner of the site. The lots range in size from 15,042 square feet to 23,739 square feet. And the proposed density is at 1.92 dwelling units per gross acre, which is below the maximum in the R1 zone of two dwelling units per gross acre. Access to the site is proposed via a new public road that will be constructed to a lane standard. And that, it consists of, I think it's 32 feet of right-of-way, 20 feet of pavement, a sidewalk on one side, and a six-foot-wide landscape strip between the street and the sidewalk. The stormwater proposal for the site is to route stormwater generated by the new public street to the stormwater pond for treatment and detention before it's released into the, an existing drainage ditch that's located up here along the north portion of the property. And then for the lots, stormwater is proposed to be managed by downsout dispersion and sheet flow dispersion prior to being connected to the onsite stormwater system. There are existing utilities, water and sewer up in Orchard Avenue that will be extended to serve, service the new lots. The second component of the application is the conditional use permit, as I mentioned. And the reason that that is required is because Ace of Hearts Creek, which goes across that 16-foot portion of the site, is a designated fish and wildlife habitat conservation area under the city's critical areas regulations. And that chapter says that anytime you're going to subdivide property that has a fish and wildlife habitat conservation area on it, you need to get a conditional use permit. So that's why the applicant has submitted for that permit type. Having said that, there are no impacts proposed to the area with the stream. No construction near that area at all.
Quick question?
Sure.
Is that stream, I believe it says it's in a culvert. Is that in a culvert along the length of that stream? Or at what point does it surface?
It's just along, I believe it's just along the 16-foot wide portion of this lot. And then at various other locations downstream.
So was, were there any questions or issues about daylighting that portion of the stream? Or does it meet current standards?
The
That culvert?
Yeah, the, because the applicant is not proposing any impacts in the area to the stream, the requirement is that stream functions be maintained. And so there is no, staff is not recommending that any improvements be made to that, that stream section.
Thank you.
Got some photos for you. On the left side, you'll see a location where the photo was taken. And then the arrow shows you the direction that the photo was taken. So this is right at the north side of the property, looking west on Orchard Avenue. And then this is looking north along Cherry Lane. And 41st Street would be the street up here in the distance. This one's looking south at the project site. Where you're looking right here is right approximately where the new, the new public road would be constructed. This, this photo is on the project site, a good distance, looking to the sort of north, northwest, I guess, back at the Orchard's Development up the hill. Looking southeast. Looking east, this is one of the trees that is proposed for retention, this Douglas fir. And then this photo is from the, taken from the very back southwest corner of the site, which is the high point of the, of the property. Couple more. This shows you the proxima area where the stream is culverted across the property, looking east towards Hart Lake Road. And then turning around and looking back to the west. The applicant submitted a tree removal and preservation plan, which is shown here. There's a grouping of alder trees along the south property line that would be removed. And a couple of trees that you saw in a previous photo, a cherry tree and I think another alder that would be removed in the northern portion of the site. The Douglas fir that's located over on the east here would be protected and retained. And then the site would be landscaped. This is the landscape plan with new street trees. The storm, proposed stormwater detention tract would be landscaped with some thicker landscaping along the north and the east side to buffer from the adjacent property there. And then the individual lots would be required to plant additional trees at time of home construction so that they, so ultimately the site will meet the minimum requirements for tree density. So we did receive some public comments on this application. And I just, I tried to summarize them the best I could here. I think there were four, four letters that we received. The first comment was concerned with future homes and landscaping, future landscaping that would block views of existing homes in the area. And staff review, the city really doesn't have any established regulations that protect views from private property. And the homes will meet the R1 zoning standards at time of future home construction. So they'll have to comply with the maximum fence heights, maximum hedge heights, 35-foot maximum building height, et cetera. There were some concerns from neighbors about the proposed location of guest parking. The, the new public road, Cherry Court, will be 20 feet wide and it will be signed as a no parking road because that's the minimum size for emergency apparatus access. And so any guests that would be visiting would park along the project frontage on Orchard Avenue. And there was some concern from adjacent property owners about that. Staff reviewed the proposal for the location of the guest parking and it does conform to the requirements of the code. There were some comments about conformance with adjacent developments, conditions and private covenants and restrictions. So the adjacent development is the Orchard's Planned Unit Development and it surrounds the project site on, on three sides. And that, that proposal went through a little bit different regulatory process and permitting process with the city for a planned unit development. The city council's decision for that project included conditions that were deemed necessary by council to achieve the purposes of the planned unit development provisions. And in exchange, that development was allowed to have smaller lots and some, some road modifications. And so they have some conditions and also private covenants and restrictions that go beyond what the minimum code requirements are for the R1 zone. And we can talk about that more if you, if you'd like. Stormwater impacts, there were some concerns about downstream stormwater impacts. And the application has been, for the stormwater proposal for the site, has been reviewed by the city's third-party review consulting firm. And the stormwater management will need to meet the Chapter 1976 stormwater in the code and then also the 2014 stormwater, I can never say this right either, Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington, which essentially should mean that there should be no increase in discharge from the site over the current condition. So there shouldn't be any more stormwater leaving the site after project development as there is currently. So just a summary of the review criteria for the different, the two types of permits that the applicant has applied for. Staff has provided a staff report where we've gone through and outlined all of the approval criteria and given you some draft conclusions. And staff's recommendation is to approve the preliminary short plot and conditional use permit, subject to the recommended conditions in the staff report. And that concludes the, what I had prepared for the staff presentation. And I'm happy to answer questions and I know that the applicant is online as well, available to, to answer questions.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Libby, can you? I'm sorry, Mike.
That's okay.
Libby, could you, could you go to a previous slide that kind of shows an overview? Yeah, so that one's not a bad one. Go back, go forward again. Forward.
Forward.
Yep. One more. That one right there. So from, from looking at this photo, I would assume that it appears that Cherry Lane, the Cherry Court, the new road, is going to be the primary road that feeds the driveways for all of these lots. Is that, is that a true statement?
That's correct.
So could you remind me what meets the standard for guest parking requirements actually means?
Sure. So the code requires a, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I think it requires one space per two or three lots of guest parking. So each of these lots will be required to provide a minimum of two off-street parking spaces. So on the lot themselves. They'll have either a driveway or garage or a combination of, of both. And then the code also requires provision for the guest parking. And the guest parking can be provided along the property's frontage on a public street. And so that's what the applicant is proposing here, along Orchard Avenue. They've got some, some spaces here. And then it could also be provided along Lot 6 as well. Did that answer your question?
Well, I mean, that's the answer to the question. Whether it answers my question, I guess, is going to be something that we'll wait to see. I think from the depiction of what the proposed home placement on, for Lot 4 would suggest, that that's a relatively large driveway to help, you know, mitigate the on-street parking concerns. I'm familiar with this neighborhood. I'm familiar with the homes that are in this neighborhood. And I would be surprised if the neighbors are going to be happy with people parking along Orchard Avenue whenever there's one or more parties or large events happening in this neighborhood. So, you know, I'm going to assume that the, you know, that the design of these homes and the placement of the homes on these lots is going to help accommodate for that off-street parking.
Libby, I have a question on that, on that chart also, if I can ask it. If you look at the cul-de-sac, can you? I made the assumption, I was over there today. So because it doesn't show the continuation of a road, to get to lots three and four implies one of two things. They would have a shared driveway feeding off of the cul-de-sac or their driveways would be entered via Orchard Place, which I believe, well, it's marked there, is a private driveway. Do you know what the plan is? Because I'm in agreement with Jeff that you have a lot. I mean, the bottom line is you've got six lots, two cars, that's 12. There's no place to park. If you, if somebody invites five different couples over for a gathering or what have you, it's, it's very dense-packed. And driving along Orchard Place, there's no park, place to park there. I know it's a private road, but you've got to have emergency vehicle, vehicle access. I know it's a private road, but you gotta have emergency vehicle, vehicle access. So the question is, how do you get into lot three? How do you get into lot four? If it's not a shared driveway and then this, you can't park out here if this is the entrance. Which would force more parking out on Orchard Lane.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Court, Court, right? The answer is that yes, a shared driveway is proposed to access lot three over the panhandle that's connected to lot four.
Okay.
So both of these lots will access from the new public road. And yes, Orchard Place is a private road, so there would not be any new access onto that road.
Okay. The second question I had is I noticed the height limitations are thirty-five feet for the construction. So if I look at the Orchard Development and I look at lots forty-one thirteen through forty-one nineteen, which are on the west side of lots one, two, three and four. If you built a two-story house there, then they will be blocking the lots forty-one thirteen through forty-one nineteen, forty-four nineteen. Because I think they are all single-level homes, I think. And I know the covenants are different. But that's a lot of blockage right off the bat.
I'm sorry, I, I lost my presentation.
That's okay. There it is. These forty-one thirteen through forty-one nineteen, forty-four nineteen. These, if my recollection is right, are also family homes. So if you come in and the three, the three lots here, they would hundred percent block the view if they're built to the maximum thirty-five feet height.
Well, yeah, if, if they are, that's potential, but remember there are other limitations on the maximum size of homes in terms of building coverage. Minimum landscape requirements and there will be stormwater. There will need to be areas left in vegetation for stormwater, stormwater dispersal and so there will be, and there are also ten-foot side yard setbacks. So it's not that there will be a, you know, a complete blockage, I don't think.
No, they won't. I, I agree with that, but I stood in front of forty, forty, forty-four fifteen and looked out. And if there's a house built on these, depending upon where the house is built, they will be blocked a hundred percent on view regardless of, you know, what you have on the, the left and right-hand side of the house.
Mike, what do you suggest?
I don't have a suggestion. I'm, I'm just observing. If you look at the way Orchard was developed, it's developed high to low. So the views are continuous down. And these are all the, it looks like to me, in this particular area, the lowest forty-four thirteen to forty-four nineteen are the least highest homes, if you will. I don't know the right way to say it. And I'm just saying that there's a thirty-five foot limit height. Depending on the house, where the houses are positioned on the new lots they were talking about, you would have blockage. You would have view blockage.
I would, I would ask that you, that you, you know, can, consider this, their staff's recommendation and that is the city is not responsible for protecting the views of private property, right? I mean, unfortunately, this, these lots were available, this property was available when these folks bought their homes and built their homes and you know, I think unfortunately time now may block their view if they have one.
Well, I'm wondering what the original, when the city approved. I know they don't approve CCNRs. But there were conformances that they hadn't come to and I wonder what that said. I don't know.
Well, that's a good question. I mean, Libby, one of the, one of the public questions was whether this property will be a part of the Orchard HOA. Do you know that?
There is no requirement in the city code that the, the property adopts those CCNRs or be part of that HOA. I suppose the applicant could volunteer to do that, but not done that to my knowledge.
I don't know, Mike, that, that's a tough one if you're going to try to, you know, manage the each one of these lots and the size and where the home goes to help try to protect an existing home's view. That's, that's going to be a, a tough one.
I understand, I understand, but it's there. It's a reality.
Mr. Chair, this is Dawn. Perhaps this would be a good time for the applicant to address the height and the HOA as well.
Okay.
Shall we invite the owner's comments?
Sure. Yeah, I think, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I'm Brian Gentry, I'm Atlanta Gentry Homes and Communities. We're a, a regional home builder and a community developer. I, born here in Anacortes, I, I live here in Anacortes, I'm raising my family here. And we, even though we do build throughout the region, you know, certainly I, I'm familiar with, with a lot of the, the concerns that have been brought up. Just as a little bit of history, a little bit of background, you know, certainly, you know, if you look here on the south end of town, you know, it's, it's kind of a quasi-rural area that has, has been in the, that's been developed over a number of years. And you know, there's been some development that's kind of gone around parcels that haven't wanted to develop the time they're developing. I think you look at the orchards as a great example of that. You know, there were several out parcels around that development that chose, that, at the time, not to participate in the development. And so those were, those were left out and eventually, you know, these property owners came to, came to us and said they were interested in selling and, and like us to go ahead and come up with a plan. You know, when the orchard was developed a number of years ago, the planned unit development, and they were just developed, you know, push, you know, fifteen plus years ago. You know, there was the planned unit development process that allowed for a trade-off, you know, where you would trade off higher, you would take, you would, you would allow higher densities in exchange for design standards, design guidelines, height restrictions, planting, things like that. So it really allowed for the, the developer, that particular property to be able to trade, make some trade-offs. You know, they traded off. They, they put some conditions on their property, they put some restrictions on their property in exchange for a higher density that allowed them to have much smaller lots than what we're, what we're proposing with the R1 standard requires of fifteen, you know, the R1 requires fifteen thousand square foot lots. And you know, that, those are huge, but by, by anybody's stand, by, by current, by urban growth, by growth management standards, that they're substantially larger. Certainly, as you folks know, you know, other parts, the northern parts of the city have six thousand square foot lots and seventy-five hundred squares, a lot of seventy-five hundred square foot lots in town. So certainly, these are, this is effectively more than twice the size of what your average-sized lot in the city of Anacortes is, to give some perspective. You know, for, and for example, if you notice, you know, the, the four, the four homes that are adjacent, the, but on the west side, you know, those lots are quite a bit smaller, you know, they're, they're five thousand square feet or more smaller than what our, what our three, than what our three lots are that we're proposing adjacent to that. You know, certainly I understand the concerns that folks have. And the tricky part is, you know, we were pretty limited. If, if, if we could have gone through a PUD program in this property, for example, and we probably could have gotten a couple more homes in here pretty easily and there probably would have been some impetus to do some trade-offs. But basically, given the way, the last time the code has been updated, you know, the R1 is pretty limited on what you can do and R1 really only allows you effectively, to effectively build to the code standard effectively. And that's what we're doing here, you know. I think everything that we're proposing in this application meets, meets the code. You know, we're using a code, code guide, guides, street standard, we're using you know, lot, minimum lot size as required by code, a lot of these things. So it's tricky and I understand that, yeah, it's, it's changed and it's going to be a little different than when people have gotten used to looking at a horse pasture outside their window and now there'll be some neighbors there. The reality is, as Libby mentioned during her report, is though I don't think you're going to effectively see wall of homes across that section. You know, there, there will be, will people see roofs out their windows? Yeah, they'll probably see some roofs. Are they going to see around them? Yes. You know, is Mal Baker substantially taller than the rest of, than, than what the outlook is here? Certainly, we want to be a good neighbor, but we also, you know, have to, you know, I don't think we're in a spot here where we're wanting to, to limit, put, put handcuffs on the designs and the way we can build out the lots.
So, Ms. Grange, I seem to recall during the review of the new codes, no mention anywhere of view preservation as inuring to existing properties. But only having to do with meeting the building codes on the property itself. So I, I think your your staff assessment seems to be accurate as far as I'm aware. I don't think, I don't think there are any view corridors or view preservation items in this area of zoning.
Mr. Chair, that, that's correct. The city has not established any regulations protecting views from private property. That, that is a little bit different in, in shoreline areas where that gets taken into consideration a little bit more, but under our zoning, there are no protections of private views.
Thank you. Any other questions or issues brought, to be brought up?
I had one question. The, the piece of pavement that looks like a continuation of Orchard Avenue, I can't really tell what that is on my screen. Is that more, is that just more road?
Where my cursor is right here?
Yes.
That's just a continuation of Orchard Avenue.
So that's not like private, that's, that's a public road?
That's a public right-of-way, yep.
One of the concerns that I've seen in other neighborhoods are is this going to have normal trash pickup or is there going to be like a central location with dumpsters? Because one of the problems in these, in these types of neighborhoods, particularly if you use a lot, allow a lot of parking is that they can't pick up trash cans with the, the equipment that the city has. Is that going to, has that been resolved with this development?
Yes, the sanitation department has looked at the, the proposal. The trash and recycle would be curbside for each home off of the new public road. So they'll have their own individual cans accessed from the new public road.
And is there any restriction on parking if, like on trash day or anything like that, if, on, on any of the adjacent roads if we're going to allow parking on Orchard Avenue?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, if we're allowing parking on Orchard Avenue and if there's, is, is there any restriction on where people park, particularly construction vehicles? If there is trash to be picked up in front of any of these houses in the area? Because if you have a lot of parking, it's harder for the trash guys.
There is no city regulation other than just the seventy-two hour maximum timing that, that you're able to park on a public street. The applicant will need to, you know, work with the city to, to look at where the construction vehicles will, will park and be stored. And we'll make sure that they won't impact adjacent properties' trash collection.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It might be a good time to see if there are any members of the public that would like to speak.
Are you done with your presentation?
I am, thank you.
And we will entertain any comments, any public comments?
Hi Chair, we have a Ms. Bowers on the line. I'm going to allow her to talk right now.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this and I'm sorry my name just shows up as Bonnie. This is Bonnie Bowers. I live at four-four-one-three Orchard Avenue. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm glad Libby has this slide up and I have talked to Mr. Gentry about this. I certainly understand the thirty-five foot rule. I hope this development takes that into account when they build on these lots behind our house, especially those, those three. I'm not so much worried about the view because I understand that. Even though I, I hope the, the height restriction isn't built to maximum. What worries me is behind forty-four thirteen, and you can almost see this on Libby's slide, there's an unnatural rise. And, and I was interested to see the one commissioner was out here today because you probably saw it. You can see along Orchard Place, the, the trees and the blackberry bushes, but right up in the southwest corner, there is a mound of dirt and it's got grass over it now because it's been that way for thirteen or fourteen, well, fifteen years now. When our houses were built, we all have nice crawl spaces or daylight basements. And some of the excavation went there, not a lot, but some. And so if that homeowner in that lot decides to build on that corner, it's going to be thirty-five feet plus an additional six, seven, eight feet of where that mound is. So I would be interested in the applicant bringing that back into the same level as the rest of, of the property. And, and I, I talked to Mr. Gentry about that, but I, and I don't know if that's something that, that this body can, can do. And then my second question was the orchards itself, you know, we all, in, in our HOA, and I know that you don't have statutory authority to, to bring these lots into the HOA. But the orchard is a beautiful park maintained by this neighborhood. At a cost to every homeowner, not a significant cost, but a, a cost every year. And we certainly would be interested in, in this development being part of that. That's all I had. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to respond to any of that as the applicant?
Please go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thank you Bonnie, I appreciate we, we talked on the phone here a few weeks ago, or week or so ago. Yeah, that mound, you know, our intention is to actually regrade that out at the time of we do site, site development. Because yeah, that, that is, it's not an appropriate place to be building a home on top of that. So there wouldn't be you know, a little tower going on top of that, would not be our intention. So the plan is, is to, to take either remove or, or, or spread out that mound across the site. A lot of times when we start clearing off sites like this, he'll find some low spots and things like that, they can use the extra material. So we'll take care of that. And then, you know, regarding the, the, you know, this, these homes being connected to your HOA or being, you know, having some way of helping support the maintenance of the orchard, certainly that's something I'd be happy to visit with, you know, with you and, and the other, you know, the board or whomever would be the right persons in your HOA to talk about that. So certainly that's something I'd, that's a conversation I'd be happy to have offline about that.
Thank you, Mr. Gentry. Do we have any other public comments? Thank you, Mr. Coughlin. Hearing no further comments, we will close the hearing. And unless there are further conversations with the commission members.
This is Frank Juretsky. And I, I, I'd like to disclose that I have done business professionally with Mr. Gentry over the years with Land of Gentry. And I've never talked to him about this particular project, though. Didn't know anything about it until it appeared on our agenda for tonight's meeting. But again, I have done business with Land of Gentry. I, I do business with Land of Gentry currently and I just wanted to disclose that.
And if I understand correctly, we need to just see if there are any objections to your participation in the, in the process at this point? If anyone feels there are conflicts of interest. None being heard. Thank you for your disclosure. We will proceed. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
I'm not sure this is relevant, but is forty-four twenty-one Orchard Avenue slated for, that's, looks a lot smaller than the other lots. Is that slated for, is that slated for development at this point? Does anybody know?
I, Mr. Chair, I, I believe that that area is just a, a park slash open space area that is a, just an undevelopable tract, that is part of the orchards.
So that's going to mean, that's, is that?
So that's going to mean, that's, is that mandated to remain that way or is that just a preference?
That, I. It is a requirement on the platmat for the Orchard Development.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? With that, we will close the hearing and. Chair will entertain a motion. Anyone have the wording in front of you, want to try, give it a shot? I will, uh, the chair will make a motion to approve. The subject preliminary short plot division and conditional use permit. File number SPL twenty-twenty zero-zero-zero-three, subject to the staff's suggested conditions of approval. Second. Okay, shall we do the roll call? Mr. Court Right?
Reluctantly, yes.
Uh, Mr. Graff?
Yay.
Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Mr. Mount?
I'd, I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Ruther?
Yay.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, everybody, um, are there any other issues for the agenda or things for the good of the order?
Mr. Chair, I had one other question. And, and this is, it doesn't pertain to now, but we approved the short plat and the conditional use permit. But then as I understand that there is a series of hurdles as they go through the process. That they got to get approval for, is that right, Libby? In other words, it's, it's a step-by-step process.
Correct, so then, so preliminary short subdivision approval authorizes the um, applicant. To submit their civil construction plans, which will be reviewed by our Public Works Department. And those will be reviewed and approved, and there will be a pre-construction site meeting. And then the applicant will construct the improvements, the public improvements on the site. Prior to final short plot approval. Um, and final short plot approval is where they record the subdivision and, and at that point they have individual lots, so to be able to.
I was wondering, the, the owners of the property are Ronald Baic and his son here in California. And as I understand, Atlanta Gentry is the owner of the project. As you go through these steps, who literally has the liability? For. Meeting all these hurdles, I assume obviously landed Gentry, but does the owner of the property have any liability?
Uh, actually, as, as we were processing the application, landed Gentry became the owner of the property.
So they bought the land, and so you don't have that issue of. An owner of a project and owner of land. Okay.
They're the owners.
That makes it easier then.
Right?
Okay. Thank you, are there any other questions or items to bring up? With that, we will call the meeting to a close, thank you very much, everybody, we'll see you next time.
Good night.